That is not clear, but I'm getting a signal.
All right. We wait for it and start with that, Ray.
All right. Welcome, everyone, to the A F H, A H S thirteen, um, NOFA study session. It's this Wednesday, September third. Um, we're here at three fifty eight Convention Way in Redwood City. Um, public participation, um, some people have possibly sent in written public comments. There's an address that they can be emailed to. Um, we will also accept public comments during the meeting and through Zoom. Our agenda today, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order and call roll call. And then this, and then, um, Jan is going to go ahead and give the staff and the H C D C introductions. So let's start with that. Roll call. Um, Annie Stae?
Annie here.
Annie.
I'm present.
Oh, Annie's online. Okay, great. Okay, we have Jenny Gobol.
Yes.
We have Now. We have George here.
Yes, she's not here.
Okay, not quite yet. Nicole?
Yes, here.
Okay. We have Elizabeth Moreno.
Here.
We have Jesslyn Manalo, is she here?
She's here.
No, she's not here.
Oh, she is here?
No, she's not.
Not here. Okay, is that Ray down there? Rich? Okay, Jesslyn's not here. Monica Lee? And we have Rachel, of course. And I heard Rich down there, right?
Right.
Okay. And Laura? Did I see Laura?
No, not here.
No? Okay, great. Okay, great. So there are one, two, three, four, five, six, uh, plus Annie online and our staff. All right, so there's our roll call. And which is fine, we don't need a quorum because we won't be taking action today. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jan, going to give a little bit of staff introduction.
Yeah. So thank you, everyone, for being here and for all your work to prepare for this meeting. I'm Jan Stokely with the Department of Housing, and I oversaw the work of the staff uh, to review applications for A H S funding. And we'll just go around the room and let you know who else is here.
I'm Doug Frederick, Housing Program Manager.
I'm Kofek, H C D Supervisor. Vanessa Smith is Supervisor of the State Office. Priska? Nina Robertson? And then over to Masia.
Those are all one of the H C D.
Thanks, Jen. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open the meeting up for public comment. Any items that are not on the agenda. Have we had anything submitted via email? Any members of the public in the room? All right. Here, two.
Two or three members of the public online, but nobody has said that they want to make public.
Fantastic. Appreciate that, Ken. Okay. We'll go ahead and close public comment.
Hi.
Yes? Okay, we have a public comment. Please.
Hey, everyone. Uh, thank you so much for your time. Uh, I'm Diego Terreros, um, in Housing, talking about the eighty-one weeks of food project. Uh, first of all, thank you so much for, uh, considering, we, we just saw the agenda and we saw that uh, we are being recommended, at least, uh, from some funding.
Okay, you're gonna need, we're gonna, excuse me, I'm so sorry to do this to you, but you're, this is general public comment for items that are not on the agenda.
Okay.
So we'll go ahead and note that you are in the wing.
Okay.
When we get to that project, we will open it up for your commentary. How's that?
Perfect, that's perfect. Thank you so much.
Great, no problem. I'm sorry about that confusion.
Again, more, thanks.
No worries. No worries. Okay, so we have no public comment for items not on the agenda. I'm going to turn it over to item number three, which is A H S thirteen point O highlight. I'm going to turn it over to Jan.
Great, and I'm just going to move up here so I can make eye contact.
It's a little hot.
All right, so thank you again, everyone. Happy to do this issue through our discussion of the application. Up in Southern NOFA. This year, we, uh, had available about forty-one million dollars in the NOFA. We had our standard measure K award, which is to be about nineteen million. Um, it was enhanced this year because the Board of Supervisors in October of twenty twenty-four made certain awards of ARPA funds for our Board of Housing development. And as a result of those ARPA awards, uh, we were able to recover the measure K funding in this case of NOFA. It was larger than what you would expect to see in any one year's forward allocation of measure K. Um, also, to be awarded, we, uh, received a hundred thousand dollars from the Charlie Impact fee. Um, we are the administrators of a permanent local housing allocation from the state H C D. Um, and we're making those funds available. Um, we also have a partnership with Behavioral Health Service, Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, um, to award mental health services act funding. Um, the funding was recovered from a project in South San Francisco that didn't move forward, and in collaboration with the H R S, we're awarding it. And then, for the first time, we're including in the NOFA, uh, Health and Human Services Action Award, um, which has been made possible through collaboration with our Human Services Agency. They receive funding from state H C D, uh, for the A C A four of us. And they have some unexpendited funds that they'd like to use to award, uh, to make permanent support housing units for people who are experiencing homelessness truly affordable. Um, so those are our funding courses this year. Um, we released the NOFA in early June, it was due in early July. We received seventeen applications requesting a little over a hundred and thirty-four million dollars. Um, for seventeen, that was our highest number of applications this year. That's the highest I've ever looked. Um, two of the applications withdrew during the threshold of our review. Um, five were determined not to meet thresholds, and ten of seventeen applications met thresholds and were then scored and ranked for recommendations. Um, during our scoring period, one of the applicants withdrew because a funding source that, um, was on hold was confirmed and may no longer support our housing funding. So that leaves us with nine remaining applications requesting a total of, uh, fifteen, how do you call that?
Fifty-nine.
Sixty-nine, a little over sixty-nine million, um, leaving us with a funding gap of a little over twenty-eight. Um, so what we're, um, happy to see is that among the nine remaining applications, we still do have very good she is expressed by the county, um, with applications from Belmont, St. Louis City, Aspen Bay, Menlo Park, we probably also have some of those, um, speed. So that's a little bit about, uh, the highlights of the NOFA before, and this is going to slide. Are there any comments or questions? So to kind of set you up for, uh, discussion of each project and the awards that we're making, I wanted to provide a little bit of context regarding what's happening with the larger state and federal finances for global housing. The county's A H S NOFA typically makes up only a small percentage of the total development cost of projects. Um, it wouldn't be a typical for the county's funding to be about fifteen or maybe forty-two of the total development. So the projects that we're reporting very much rely on other global housing finance sources that depend on what's happening with the federal budget and with the state budget. Uh, and with that in mind, I wanted to share some good news, which you may have already heard about. In early July, a federal bill was passed called H R one. And it, for the first time in years, expanded the allocation to state for the award of tax credits. Um, tax, federal tax credits are awarded at the state level, and they have a capped allocation, obviously, because of the impact on the federal budget. And this year, for the first time in years, we saw anything in that cap allocation. So that means that California's nine percent tax credit allocation will be increased by twelve point five percent. And, um, the changes in H R one almost doubled the capacity of the state to award four percent tax credits, um, because the financing cap on tax exempt bonds was, uh, uh, was improved. And so we will see a significant increase in the number of projects that are benefiting one-four percent. Um, so that's the good news. And we know at the state level, our California Tax Credit Allocation Committee, um, did lack, which awards the bonds, they're already moving to implement these changes immediately, um, because there's a significant backlog of projects that are funded for tax credits. Um, so, um, this improves the likelihood that our projects will receive an award of federal tax credits. But often, the federal tax credits, um, are only a part of that gap that's not built by the county funds. And historically, um, California has provided housing finance programs through the State Department of Housing and Community Development that have mostly been funded through the issues of housing. Um, those funds have, on their course, have been no longer available for a number of programs. Um, there is a bond initiative that will be on the ballot soon, which will hopefully be finished, a source of funds for some of these state H C D housing finance programs. But in the meantime, those programs are really significantly underfunded compared to what we've seen in the prior three to five years.
Got a quick question. You said there's a potential, there's another bond measure, get additional funding. Is that bond measure on the state level or on the county level?
Is it, is it state housing bond, um, which could provide funding to state level programs that make up part of the financing capital stack for each project?
Assuming it's an extra tax that they're planning on, uh, hoping to pursue.
Um, well, it's a bond measure. It's a general obligation bond measure, not a tax.
So evidently, it's funded by the state, state, uh, budget?
Uh, yeah, so the legislature has authorized the housing bond in the amount of about ten billion dollars to be on the ballot for.
But every, every bond measure has to have a funding source.
Yeah, and it would be the full banking credit of the state of California.
Yeah, exactly.
Not a revenue bond?
Yeah.
Um, that's dedicated to funding the state H C D housing programs, which, as I mentioned, were, are now fairly underfunded. Um, so what we're seeing is that our projects need tax credits, and it will now be easier to get tax credits. But in the short term, state H C D funding has. So we saw this year that in the state budget, there was no funding for the Enzo and Interconstruction Grant program or the Joc Serna Farm Worker Housing Program. Um, programs that we typically administer with state funding, Housing for Housing California, Mental Health Services Act, Local Housing Tax Fund, those programs no longer have any funding. Uh, the M H C program continues to be funded at a hundred and twenty million dollars annually, and state tax credits continue to be funded at five hundred million dollars annually, but the amount does significantly more than that. Um, there's a program called Global Housing Sustainable Communities. That program is threatened by a federal freeze of the greenhouse gas reduction fund. And we're in a time of uncertainty for federal housing funds, like homeless C D G project-based vouchers, and our housing authority is moving to work on them. Um, so we're, we're in a time of, regarding the other funding sources that are needed to make the projects feasible, and that's pretty much been in the backdrop of our review of seventeen applications. Any more questions about that side? Uh, so in that context, um, we made some final recommendations with a focus on to underline this. One is to identify the projects that are, if a final county award would be competitive for tax credits and would make it over the minimum time and would get to start construction within the next year. Um, so that's, that's one principle, is to try to analyze the projects to see if they are truly able to make it over. We're also looking to fund strong projects that are at an early stage, the smaller predevelopment, grants in the town, they would be able to continue to work on, planning for the projects, putting together financing, and good insurance for global housing funds for a larger award later. Um, and then finally, we have a responsibility to batch more restrictive funding sources for projects that can actually reduce restrictions. And, um, P L A K, the Mental Health Services Act, and the A C A funding all come with timing and two different, as well as program restrictions. And, um, there are only some projects that are going to line up with this. And then, as good cheers of the dollars that we're awarding, our goal is to impose project system with time-bound funding conditions and monitor closely for performance and take action to support projects, making the progress that was the basis for our award today. Any questions on that slide? Okay, so, so the next slide pretty shows you where our draft funding recommendations are sitting today as we introduce you to each project. Um, we have the challenge of going from, we've passed sixty-nine million to awards of forty-one million. Um, but the recommendations that we've made, um, are designed to get some projects over the finish line and then help some other projects get off to a good start, um, so that they'll be feasible in a later year. Um, so we'll be talking about each of these nine projects, um, but the main focus is that we are trying to work for all the projects that met thresholds, give them some level of funding either to get over the finish line this year, that's our number one goal. Get the housing built, get it available to our community as soon as we can, and then make smaller awards to projects that are in early stage. So any questions on this slide? We'll be talking about each project individually.
I have a request. Give me, I'm dealing with a bit of a emergency at work today, so I may have to step in and out. So I apologize in advance. There's a project on here for Noven Housing, it's at the very end, uh, we're going to go over that one. Is it possible we could move that one up, uh, to the front, only because that's in my neighborhood? And I didn't want to miss that.
All right, everybody else. Of course. Okay. Thank you, George, for letting us know. Any other comments before we move on to the individual project slide? Any comments from the public for anyone?
Yeah, we, no.
I, I just had one, um, uh, Ray Hodges was kind enough to indulge, um, our staff in South San Francisco and some colleagues from another city in the county to chat a little bit about threshold requirements in this round. Um, and so I just wanted to share a couple of, like, my thoughts of looking at the sort of applicant pool and, and the recommendations and, um, you know, for the benefit of the committee and just to, to share a bit about our experience. Um, so I, I wanted to start by saying that South San Francisco, we're incredibly grateful for the commitment that county has made to, to projects in South City past and recommended in this round. Um, we're really excited about all the affordable housing we have moving forward. Um, but we have some concerns about the threshold requirements and, um, sort of the evaluation of, of, of those threshold requirements in the most recent NOFA round. Um, I, I don't know how public it was shared, how publicly it was shared, but about one week before the NOFA launched, county staff through our regional consortium, twenty-one elements, sent a survey to jurisdictions asking for feedback on the new NOFA threshold, um, questions. Um, with just about a week to respond, and, and we responded, but there wasn't sort of a, a answer back of how that feedback was or was not incorporated, though I did notice some minor changes to the, to the NOFA threshold requirements. Um, one of the big changes was in prohibiting or weakening local preferences, so local preferences in affordable housing, like live-work preferences, even when those are sort of legally adopted and compliant with state and federal fair housing. So that was a big concern for us in South San Francisco. Um, also, more specifically, South San Francisco had two applicants in this round. One met threshold in a prior round, but not this round, which I understand the reasoning behind. And then one has moved forward. Um, the project that did not meet threshold, though, has been prioritized by our city. So it was sort of, seems like the county recommendations are almost in contrast to where the city is trying to prioritize and accelerate affordable housing. And the reason why that one project is important to us is because it's in a higher-income neighborhood. It's in an area with no affordable housing. It's sort of at the center of our new, um, city core, by our new community center. And so seeing that deprioritized at the county level was, um, a little disheartening because it was in contrast to what our city is trying to prioritize. Um, so some of those overarching, um, sort of concerns about the threshold requirements, one is that there's just so many, the barrier to entry into this funding stream is pretty high. I'm glad to see more folks are applying, more projects are coming forward. But some of those threshold requirements are fairly subjective without, like, a clear cutoff for what will be considered and what won't be considered, um, acceptable. Um, also, the local preference threshold just erodes our ability to try to preserve communities and prevent displacement. Um, so I, I, my, my ask is really that perhaps before the next H F NOFA round, county staff consider engaging cities well in advance of the NOFA release to talk about how thresholds can be more clearly articulated to our development community so that we don't spend time applying for a funding source that really isn't available, um, or at least to certain projects. And then, and, and then secondly, that we talk about how the county threshold aligns with how cities are trying to prioritize affordable housing and affordable housing funding in our own jurisdictions. Um, so hopefully, that's not too big of an ask, but it would be really nice to sort of meet a little bit in advance, maybe a few months in advance of the next NOFA, to talk about these concepts rather than sort of a more impersonal survey right before its release.
I fully agree with you. I was actually going to touch upon a lot of that with what I was going to say later, but I'm glad you mentioned it.
Um, just Jeff want to respond?
Yeah, um, Karen and I have already discussed that, you know, over meeting where there'll be a discussion of priorities, but we have a broader discussion of A H S priorities. Um, so that's been very much on our minds, and it sounds like October might be a good time to have that discussion because the meeting is already planned. Um, that's also about priority setting. Um, and I think regarding the, the two substantive comments, and we can talk offline. Um, the A H S NOFA has always had a limit on the number of units that a, a county financed project would have that were subject to support preference, but what we've used was county proposing to add a county preference to other units. Um, so, uh, and that's something that's very much is under discussion, and we, you know, need to continue to look at, and I'm, the leadership department is. Um, and then with respect to the project that didn't meet thresholds, it was really, it's a project that we supported in the amount of, uh, nine point five million in the past. Um, their total development cost was significantly reduced from the time when it was launched. And we, uh, uh, we had some, uh, objective criteria. One was that the developer was not willing to meet our underwriting guidelines for developer fees. So, uh, but I think the main problem with that project was that it didn't demonstrate a clear need for county funding to be successful, and that's kind of been a benchmark for charging the NOFA to institute or try to identify the project. And we did, um, eliminate another project on that same ground where we found that there wasn't any. Um, so that's not to say that these decisions aren't challenging individuals, but we do our best to be, uh, to apply objective evidence-based analysis, and we do, um, get help from financial diligence. So maybe we can talk more offline. I'm happy to do that with anyone who has questions about the NOFA or any individual project. And I appreciate the opportunity now to hear what your. Ray, did you want to add anything?
Nope.
Okay. Any other comments before we move to, I guess, we move to the NOFA project? Doug, are you, can we talk about?
So will we do, do we want to do public comments for the item in total? Or do we want to do the project on your? Do you want to do public comment for what was just said, if you're there? Or? So now we're going to the, the next agenda item? Do you want to do, I think it's just Eden who has the comment, do you want to wait till their site? Or? Yeah, let's wait till their site. That'd be perfect, because they think it'll be more relevant. So we'll just take public comment on each project as we wrap it up and see if anyone has any. Perfect, thank you. And I will ask if anyone has a public comment on what, Jan, just for that. Anyone on the? Anyone, anyone? Okay, oh, wait, I see someone down there, Rich, that you haven't heard of.
Yeah, shouldn't we take public comment first? Does it let's public guys say about it before? We start thinking about it?
Well, I think we could have the presentation, then we can take public comments.
Okay.
Then we can, um, have our conversation.
Okay, I didn't understand we were doing that.
Yeah, yeah. I think that'll work.
We're looking at, uh, thirty fifty-one Edison Way, North Pharaohs. Uh, this was, uh, golden development, and their ask was, uh, eight point one million. Uh, this is a project that we've seen a few times before, and it's a threshold previous time for a variety of reasons.
Will you hold the mic up a little bit? All right, there you go.
So they didn't pick plus threshold for, for a variety of reasons, and initially in this round, they did not. Uh, we found a number of problems with their application. Uh, for instance, uh, we have a requirement that five percent of the units be dedicated to homeless families or residents. Uh, they had dedicated five percent of the units to listed homes. They changed that, uh, uh, along with a, a few other things that came up in the, uh, interview. Uh, this project is a seventy-unit, uh, development. It is, uh, going to be modular construction. It has, um, twenty-one units, low thirty percent, sixteen units, fifty, low fifty. Other twenty-two units, a sixty-eight percent, low seventy. Uh, it will have forty units for, um, homeless, which qualifies as the, the five percent uh, that we require. Thirty-one units will be for I D D, uh, construction. Uh, they own the site already, have for a while. They were struggling with their, their loans last year, and unfortunately, we couldn't help them with that then, but they've secured some, um, better funding that they're, they're not worried about losing the site now. Uh, it's entitled under S B thirty-five, which, uh, provides their, their process. They did secure a waiver of six hundred four thousand in county fees. So that is the only other funding that they've secured. They are set to apply. Um, they are set to apply for, um, 68.5 million as a state of HTP. They listed as one of their sources 3.2 million IIG, which has not been funded, so that source is not reasonable to expect at this time. Maybe if the bond passes, they'll free up that program, we can see it in the future, but at the moment, that's not available. Uh, they incentive 59% tax credits in 2027, and, um, that's 7.9 million. So their total development cost is 64 million, uh, cost per unit is over 9 million, and the measured pay funding, uh, as they requested the 8.1 million, represents 115, or 115,0714 if they were able to get the MHP, IIG, and state tax credits. Um, without the IIG, which is at the moment, it would be 161,000. And if they were not able to get the MHP or IIG, 183,000, if they'd be looking for funding to help fund. Um, and then higher, if they were not able to get the state tax. So, um, we we still have some issues or had some issues with their their financials. Uh, as we said, the IIG is not going to be funded, and some of their assumptions about how well their, um, tiebreaker points on some of the other programs would fare in competitive funding according to our our financial and for not reasonable expectation. We we had them address some of the issues. Uh, they they had a other issue with, uh, other programs having too high an average income limit in it. They addressed that, so we we do want this project to be funded because in, uh, unincorporated counties, no other source of funding from cities could, uh, come in to help support the project. Uh, we're recommending a million dollars with, uh, stipulations that they could be an HTP funding and that they apply to tax.
All right. Um, are there any members of the public who have comment on this? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Um, George?
Got numerous, this so, this is my district, so this pains me to say this. I'm very much against this project. Uh, big reason is, one, there's no community outreach that I'm aware of. You know, and all of this gets approved and processed and they get funding and community funds out after, after they break ground. This just happened last Thursday for another affordable housing, Monarch at Redwood. Uh, they throw ground, we found out about it afterwards. I know I'm on this committee, I'm here, I know about it, the community doesn't. Um, we've already had six affordable housing units approved, funded, and built. Uh, we've got two in the pipeline, this being one.
Six units or six projects?
Sorry, six projects. We've got, um, another foster youth homeless shelter being pushed through the district as well that I'm not, I just found out about it, uh, last, last Thursday. I'm getting a lot of objections from the community for crime, for a lot of problems that we're seeing with this. Me personally, we we I've already, we've got a massive crime problem in our district in in just North Fair Oaks alone. We only have one officer assigned to our entire area that I'm aware of. It's not acceptable. Yes, we need affordable housing, but if you look at the allocations that a lot of these come with, and I'm going to go to the one that was just approved, Monarch at Redwood, a lot of it is for mentally, uh, mental challenges, people with severe disabilities, not helping the community that we have. We've got a working-class community that are families, not housing for them. Don't get priority for housing, bringing in other elements that are not from our community, and it's creating a lot of problems. So for that reason, those big reasons, I'm against it. Two, we have no parking. Parking is a massive problem in our area. A lot of it is is the businesses are struggling because of it. Uh, we have fights because of parking, and I could speak to it, uh, just on my street alone. Got neighbors putting out construction codes, no parking signs, protecting street parking for themselves because it's that bad. And the one that was just approved, Monarch, only, it's 80, 80-something units and only 22 parking spots.
Sounds a little better, but still 70 units and 29.
We can't take anymore in my community. It's it's a problem now. We don't have the supportive services and everything else that comes with it, and it's just not helping our district. I've got, yeah, I've got locals coming up to me saying, why are we finding out about this afterwards? It's not approved, it's not acceptable.
So it seems to me like, Ray, maybe you can add in here, Jan, um, George, that the, we're dealing with two different lines of reasoning or two different paths here. One is the path of approval of these projects and zoning approvals, and the other is the path of funding. So, um, I guess I would ask, Jeff, is, what would be the best way for the North Fair Oaks community to engage in, um, with the county in, uh, because this is obviously unincorporated county, in, you know, zoning, um, if there's needs to be a specific plan for your neighborhood, and giving feedback, um, to probably also state legislatures about the impact that the rules changes are having on on your neighborhood, which is, I think, a different conversation from whether we fund this project or not.
I I don't disagree with your line of thinking on this. It's it is two parallel paths, but we're also here to discuss.
We are, but we don't have jurisdiction over zoning or jurisdiction.
Kind of a zoning problem. I see it as, we're here to approve funding for developments, but the reasoning for funding shouldn't have to be solely based on meeting funding criteria, should also be the bigger picture. And then speaking of funding, what it seems is that to get approved for funding, you typically go to the state level, you get your checklist, you get that approved, and then you come to the county for additional supplemental funding. Doesn't seem like that's happened here.
They need local.
It seems like that's kind of flipped here as well. So it, I know it's counterintuitive, especially since it's my district, and I'm all for having more housing.
I mean, I think it's a little bit what Nell was talking about earlier, too, which is just, you know, how do we create this more active proactive community engagement with, between the county and the allocation? And also, George, what you're saying is going one step deeper, which is how do we engage with the local residents around, again, zoning and impacts and this. Um, it's a little difference on the line here because I think if we were to open this, these meetings to, um, debate about the sort of, um, zoning approvals of like, you know, 169 units in Burlingame that's under construction right now, you know, and and I, of course, anyone can speak through the public, but the but the real conversation towards the comment is usually this. So it seems to me your comment is, we're prioritizing funding, this would be a lower priority for you of all these other projects. There are other projects you think that would be, be better for the county as a whole?
Yeah, well, I think, George, you're raising some other, you know, so in terms of, um, you know, being able to work with county staff at at housing around this project and other proposals that come before us, we we do want our developers to get out in front of this staff and go and talk with you guys, so if that's not happening, that we we need to double back on that.
Yeah.
Um, but I think you're raising some other issues, too, that are about, uh, engaging with the county and maybe not DOH even, too, I mean, so we can certainly help with that as well, too, and I I won't present on the, on the, uh, on the law enforcement piece of it, but we can certainly make that connection to make sure that that happens.
Let's definitely take that parallel path in addition to this.
Yeah.
But if we're going to go back to just funding and discussing just these numbers, my funding perspective, to me, it also doesn't seem to meet the criteria. I mean, we, they're not getting, they're coming to us first, not last, for supplemental sourcing. Seems like we're the ones putting up the million-dollar front and then saying, great, now try to get the additional grant sources, get them, and give you some more.
Yeah, you want to just add to that real quick? Because I I always have this question, and, uh, an applicant applies for $8 million and the recommendation is, what can they really do with that?
Exactly.
So I I, and that's true for some of the other ones, too. And so I guess it would be helpful to kind of know, like, where would this get them? And why do you think that that is?
What does the million do? Is it going to admin fees?
Right.
Is it going towards, like, what are they doing with that million?
How would that help you?
Because it seems like a waste of taxpayer funding, just here's a million.
Uh, oh, yeah, I can answer that question and maybe. Oh, so with, when a project applies, we evaluate where they are in the design and community stage process, um, and how, how much more work needs to be done before they would be ready to start construction. So a predevelopment loan, I insist, would enable a developer to expand the design process. The design process is definitely like iterative, and it's one of the most, either going to the project. And so they want to take their design process forward and step it up, and so that can be really helpful. Um, and the other purpose of providing predevelopment loans is to enable a developer to get, so this can really figure out their financial feasibility. It's when they're coming to us at an early stage, they may have their eye on certain state financing sources or competing for tax credits in a certain category, and they need really deep dives to figure out what's going to happen. And so that, I think that those both are the reasons applied to this project. Um, I think to respond to George's comment, I mean, the North Fair Oaks community, I have this very important document, does emphasize affordable housing and it's, they found the savings of the North Fair Oaks community, and the applicant worked through the county's terms process to get the project entitled. The project had a certain level of community engagement to get entitled, but it's already entitled.
They did, they went through that process with the county, yet seems like every other project that goes to the county on a private level has to typically go in front of the council, kind of present it, get community feedback. These guys don't have to. I mean, I understand there might be some qualifications that say if you're doing affordable housing, you can skip everything.
Yeah, so, um, I don't think they'll tell us what they did to get entitled, um, whether it was just working with the county department or whether they ever went to the council. But we could definitely give them this feedback and ask them to come up with those to sort of how they'll engage in getting these.
So, George, what I'd really like to do, because I think, um, like, I know I have a hard job at three, I want to get through all these projects, is, um, I would also like to note, uh, you came in a little late, but this is representative for supervisor Gochet's office, and supervisor Gochet's office is representative of your district. And I might also suggest that maybe you get together with the supervisor's office.
That was our plan. We actually set this up earlier.
Okay, great. So to sort of, I know she's very concerned and, you know, advocate, her advocacy would be very helpful. I think that's another good sidetrack. What I would suggest is we not, we get the whole comprehensive review of all the funding allocations, and then we sit down and decide, is there something we feel is a higher priority than this? Or, you know, does the staff want to reconsider? We don't have recommendations today, this is just the vetting process, and then we'll be back in a week.
Of course.
So we'll give us some time to, maybe you guys can get together and have a meeting, we can talk about it a little more. Um, you know, my fear here is that if if like we start opening these processes at this point to, um, potential NIMBYs, then, I mean, it's not, your project may have your illegitimate concerns, but I can just see in a lot of communities, if these projects come through, you know, we want to be very careful that we're discussing the item on the agenda, which is the funding, and not the zoning or the, um, whether the community wants projects or not, because that's not really the purview of this agency, or this thing, you know, our group right here, but, say, HDC. But I really appreciate that you brought it up. We have a solution and a path forward, so if it's okay, I think we move on to the next project, and we just put a tack in this, and, you know, we come back. And hopefully you can stay at the meeting, and when we, when we have the full discussion, we can, um, figure that out. So do you want to go back to, um, our next project, which is the Ridge at Ralston?
Hi, everyone.
Okay, we have the Ridge at Ralston, please.
Hi, everyone, my name is Elizabala Bonin, I'm an HDC specialist. I also reviewed this project in partnership with Amy Faltich, who is not here, who is also an HDC specialist. This project is a 65-unit project, exists in a one, two, and three bedrooms, considering it a large family project. It has 31 bedrooms, 18 two-bedrooms, 17 three-bedrooms. It consists of 17 of those units at a 30% AMI, 35 units at 50% AMI, all units at 7% AMI. It includes 17 homeless units and has a past of $13 million. This was applied by Abode Housing Development in partnership with CRP Housing and Community Development LLC. It will be serviced by Abode Services and will be managed by the John Server Property Management Company. This is a really great project. It is one of the things that I would like to say, and the idea that it actually exists in a high-resourced area according to 2025 PCAT maps, it's next to Cal Green, San Tras, as well as grocery stores. It has a strong and existing funding stack, 4.3 of home art funds, which those 17 homeless units help us as the county and the project itself achieve, 1 billion in general home and $5,251,394 in moving toward. And we, in terms of measured case funds, which is directly from the county itself, is a 748,000 and $46, and it also includes a $1 million allocation from the city of Belmont. Going back, the 17 homeless units also include a, well, they do not include PPVs, but that's because when the project was in its pre-development, they were actually unable to apply for any PPVs, having the authority of the county, as San Mateo hasn't released a new allocation of project-based vouchers since this project has started applying to us. Apparently for the homeless, uh, the homeless units, they are part of the 30% AMI allocation but are currently underwritten at 10% AMI. The organization looks to see this, looks to see the 17 units being within that 10% to 30% range to be able to be affordable for those homeless units, but also includes the need from us as county to be able to support this and getting it over the finish line. This project is ready to apply for tax credits. It actually already has applied for tax credits. It, the current score right now is 120, and it has always been competitive, and with the new allocation of county funding, would balance its tiebreaker score up to 136.58%. As as dated, this project already applied for tax credits in 2025. With that, it was not awarded due to the fact that it needed the state tax, the tax credits to fill in the gap. This $13 million ask is to fill that state tax credit gap, but we are recommending 11 million to have them go back for that $2 million state tax credit.
Okay.
Yeah, that is all.
Great, I'm gonna, first of all, just have a comment since that's happening, we want to proceed. Are there any members of the public who would like to make a comment on this project? Okay, no public comment? No.
Is the 11 million in addition to the 10-ish million that county's already provided in various funding sources?
That's correct.
So the county would be in 22-ish million dollars on a 65-unit project?
That's correct.
And it's located in the city of Belmont, or is it an unincorporated county? Because they said that jurisdiction with planning entitlements authority is the county. On their application, jurisdiction with planning entitlements authority, county of San Mateo. Is this in Belmont, or is it in unincorporated county?
This is in Belmont.
For sure?
This is in Belmont.
I think the city of Belmont would give them a million if it wanted.
And the, the city's, I guess my concern is the city's only giving them a million dollars, and $22 million on a 65-unit project just seems exorbitant?
Yes, that is, that is correct. Um, one thing that I do want to say on that, it's one thing that we were able to point out when we first reviewed the application, um, a lot of those allocations, this is the 4.3 home, is only because this project had that 17 million. It was part of our, uh, application into getting the the home art awards, 4.3. 17 million is kind of tied, well, the 4.3 of the home art is tied to the project itself, um, which is kind of part of that 22, and then also the moving toward funds are also intended at the homeless units. Uh, yeah, it is.
It's it's still 20 to 25% of the total development cost is coming from coming from county?
That's correct, yes.
In Belmont.
Yeah, that seems.
It seems high. Seems like a really high per-unit subsidy.
I think, like, to give a, I think in Burlingame, the project that we did, which was sixty-nine units, was thirty-two million and a half. And I think the county put, like, six million in, so it seems more in line, right? Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
I did want to pass it to Jen.
Please.
Talk a lot more of the county contribution.
Um, I, I worked on the Burlingame project and because I had project-based vouchers, was able to support homeless units. Um, this project and most of the projects that you're considering, they don't have the opportunity to help. Um, and so in order to support seventeen homeless units at ten percent of their, we didn't have, project-based, just didn't support the county, and the human services agency have reached out to support this project and would provide ACAP funding to make that part of the eleven million because of the need for equally affordable, um, supportive housing units in an era where we lack project-based vouchers, which is.
I think so.
Just wanted to add that because it's definitely supported by our people.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, questions? More questions from the committee members?
I just wanted to say that I'm impressed by the amount of units, more than fifty percent of the units are fifty percent below. And I know the units in San Mateo that were at eighty percent in the downtown building, we had a hard time running.
So you see that some of the projects are, they do have that seventy percent, but the overall affordability is forty-eight. Right, thank you for that comment.
I liked that part of this, but.
Yeah?
I think where this hurts is the county paying for Belmont to meet its RENA at the very low-income level. Like, how, in a, in a, at very affluent community. I know that's where we need affordable housing, but where is, I mean, a million dollars is the bare minimum to even access these county funds, right? If it's in a local jurisdiction, um, it, it just feels a little extra. And I was wondering what the city plans to do about it? Like, if the city is willing to come in and provide some of that funding? If the county thinks that a live-in million is what it needs to be even more competitive for tax credits? Then why is, is the city being asked to provide some of that? This is, they're, they're giving the RENA credit for this after all.
We, in the application itself, we did not see, uh, any more money that was going to be committed or even from the developers to the city of Belmont. And from what we've heard so far.
Yeah, I mean, I've been asked, you know, to, you know, as somebody that works for the city of South, South San Francisco, to contribute more money to projects. And we have way more committed to that on projects, right? So, um, has the same ask been made to Belmont?
Why don't we, the way we handle this is, um, why doesn't staff, if you could, give a week, why don't we talk to the developer, um, call over to, you know, Belmont city staff? And, you know, express the concern that, I don't think the project's the problem. I think we like this.
The project is awesome.
And it sort of is the counterargument to the one we just had, which is all these very low supportive housing needs going into one particular community. And it's nice when cities like Burlingame get a project just like this. At Belmont, we need to be spreading these units out over the county. Um, but maybe just talk to them and just say that was one of the concerns of the committee. And, you know, even if they came up with another five-hundred thousand, a million, you know, it starts to look a little like an excess of the bare minimum. You know, so that we can leverage these funds into other projects. It doesn't hurt to ask.
I'll make sure to add this in.
Does that, no, make you happy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just if we're asking out of one city, we should be asking out of every city.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
Yeah, I think this is remarkable from the point of view that there's a section in Belmont where almost everybody who lives in that section opposes housing. And for the, for Belmont to take this on, especially with the homeless units, this has got to get some, but, ocean stirrup in, in some of the community there. So I, I like the project. And we can argue how it's funded, but it really needs to.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, if that's all right, if it's a pleasure of the committee, we'll go ahead and move on to our next project. I think we have some depth on that. Cypress Point Apartments.
Hey, so I reviewed this application in partnership with. Um, Cypress Point is a project that you're familiar with from H of twelve and former rounds of the Board of Housing Funds. Um, it's in the position of having received and awarded very, very competitive, not even to have a financing closing deadline. The reason we're back is asking you to consider an award for this project is that the county had applied to state housing, the community development department, for an award of local housing trust fund for this project. Um, and that occurred in September of twenty-twenty-four. We received our scoring letter in December, um, and the project received a very high ninety-point-four, which was sufficient in all the prior rounds to get this project. Um, we've continued to follow up with HCD regarding when they would release the actual awards and enter into a contract with the county, so that this project could be a little bit of a trust fund. Um, and we've got different dates. The latest one was July. I was coming on and we still don't have a contract. Um, and so this project, um, needs county support as it's trying in order to preserve all its other funding. So CERNIA and MHP funds have a deadline of phrasing in December. Tax credit award has a deadline of phrasing in December. So we're here to step into the gap to provide the project an additional three-point-five million dollars, as the State Department of Housing and Community Development was not able to follow through on what we thought would be, uh, contracts for an award of funds to this project. Um, and I did talk more specifically about the project if you like, but it's a very unusual circumstance for us to come to a project that has the tax credit.
Okay. Members of the public, have any comments? Okay, we'll close public comment on this item. Um, and so I take it, uh, so the word asked was the three-five and it's a full funding, which is one of our full funding. All right, does anyone have questions or comments on this project? Okay. Well, looks good then. Pardon, who did? Oh, Annie, please, thank you.
What was that last part? It's very unusual for, oh, it's very unusual for.
Oh, it's very unusual for us to come back and ask for a funding award for projects that has to be tax credit. And it's really only because of state delay and following through on what we thought would be an award, um, initially in the spring and then in July.
Okay. Is Annie okay with that? Thank you, Annie. Okay, great. Thank you for letting me know. All right, if that, um, if we'll conclude on that and move over to Road Reed Gardens, South San Francisco. Developer speaking, development.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Manas Naikey, and for this project, my review partner. Uh, Road Reed Gardens is a proposed senior housing development and delivery of South San Francisco by D.C. Development Group. Peterson and Road Reed have had a very successful partnership with existing properties in the city. Their request for a year of study is about eighteen-point-nine million dollars. Um, while the project is located in low-resourced area, it's about half a mile away from downtown, um, with shopping areas and shopping stations. They have proposed seventy-nine affordable senior units, uh, which is a mix of studio and one bedroom unit, uh, and one manager's unit. Their affordability is forty-one percent AMI, which is the second most easy affordable among the nine projects, uh, the handset threshold. Uh, in terms of readiness, if we award the full request, uh, once they complete the NIFA process, the project will be ready to apply for tax credits and bonds. We recognize that it's a very large ask from the county. Uh, we have pursued other funding sources, such as state MHP, and had two or two, but have been unsuccessful because of the very competitive process in the last year. Um, we are recommending them for fifteen-point-eight million dollars and asking that they reach out to the city and are responsible for the remaining two million dollars. We also want to highlight that the developer has been very responsive to our threshold comments and feedback, the result of which has achieved a much deeper affordability. Uh, in terms of funding, they're yet to secure their four-point tax credit, and the application is accepted and awarded. Any questions?
All right.
What was the recommended funding?
Go ahead.
Fifteen-point-eight million.
So we're about two million for that. Um, any members of the public have a question? Okay, then we'll close public comment on this one and, um, we'll put it up here. Or so, colleagues, does anyone have questions on this or?
I have a, I just have a very basic question. Give us a two-year senior, what's the age?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two?
I feel old.
I know.
That's a terrible question.
Yes.
Sorry.
Same on you.
Stop asking that question.
At eighty-three, I obviously would too.
Rich, where?
Their, their application only requests fifteen-point-two million?
Um, yes, so.
But then the spreadsheet in your presentation says eighteen-point-eight-seven-five.
That's right. So, um, we had some issues with the pro forma and the operating budget. We asked them to revise that, and you will notice that the twenty units, the affordable housing units dropped to the three-point-four AMI, which has for sale elderly and people experiencing homelessness, which is by the total.
So they reduced, they down, they lowered the target of, um, of AMI. They lowered the AMI and then required additional funding to fill the gap.
Yes, it was initially set to thirty percent AMI, but for a senior supportive housing at thirty percent AMI, it's very unlikely that those units would be enough. So, and they also dropped units that were at fifty percent AMI. Um, this would have more units at fifty percent.
No, I, I think this is sort of making our point about being clear in your threshold requirements, because I think the set-asides are under thirty percent AMI, but if what you're actually looking for is fifteen percent AMI, it should be stated in the NOFA. Um, I, I think just being, like, it is awesome you're driving incomes lower. Like, I, none of the outcome of this is what I take issue with. It's sort of more process-related and that somebody could come in with an ask of fifteen-point-two and then your recommendation is actually above that? Like, shouldn't part of the threshold be you can fill out the pro forma correctly? You know, it's, like, what standard, how much are we helping some applicants versus other applicants? Is that a perfectly level playing field?
I think we gave each application, if there were financial difficulties, we gave each application an initial round of threshold comments, um, among the threshold comments. There were other problems with the pro forma, but among the threshold comments, this is the note that says, "We'll consider any homeless or special needs units without project-based vouchers as needing a fact of demand." I'm writing that to twenty percent. So it definitely was called out in the note box because our experience, we work with projects through these talks, and we've experienced that when we have thirty percent homeless and special needs units with vouchers, they're, they're not.
You can't fill them yet.
So that's called out in the NOFA, um, but each applicant has gotten these two rounds of threshold comments. Um, and what was, um, you know, gratifying about this applicant is that they worked on every one of our comments, and we, we talked about them and they addressed them, agreed or disagreed and they addressed them, addressing them, fixing their pro forma and that they actually need some funds. And that surfaced in a number of projects where, um, the, the initial ask is below what we did see they might eventually need. So we're really trying to get, reading each project the same and having transparency about what we think the project is actually going to need from the county so that we really can compare apples and apples. Some applicants will come in and lowball their ask. That wasn't really the case here. There were issues, but they didn't really lowball. But, but some did, and, and we have to ask those tough questions because otherwise we're going to give them an award and they'll be back. After that. Um, and so we've rather sort of closed the shop, you know, in the threshold process. Um, but I can assure you now that everybody has these two rounds of threshold comments with opportunity to respond and communicate. And all of our comments were reviewed by and supported by our financial resources. So we drew on expertise that went beyond our staff capacity, so looking at pro formas and asking them. But I guess, I just want to agree with you and reassure you that we did go through this process with every applicant, and what was gratifying about this applicant was their responsiveness to our feedback. Um, it, it resulted in a larger ask, but that's transparency for all of you. And what the need is, when they try several of the units have reacted.
All right, more questions? Okay. We'll go on to. Okay. Yes, thank you. So Habitat Pierce Road, Menlo Park.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dorak Moradi, and I work on the Habitat Pierce Road with my apartment, parent property, and I'm very excited to be here. So, um, this is different than other projects. This is first time homeownership project for, um, this is eight town homes, townhomes at average of fifty percent AMI. And since many of you are already familiar with this project, I want to talk about the history behind this project and stuff, when it started to get involved, um, okay. As you can see, the site, um, City of Menlo Park is very supportive of this project. It already has three-point-six million in this project, so this is because this project is existing in the Delahaven neighborhood. Delahaven neighborhood is a vibrant community that has so often been overlooked and overlooked in the past. So City of Menlo Park, um, recognized this specific site as opportunity site in its housing development park inventory. In this specific neighborhood, there are mostly like single home, single-family homes and there are mostly renters, and they, they are very limited pathway to give wealth. This project is about changing that history, creating new opportunities for families to put down roots and give stability for generations, generations to come. This project is a specific project, directly respond to that history, expanding access to ownership and for working equal housing opportunities. Why that we can see this site is low-resourced area, I can say that by deciding this is a specific project, um, the site is, is very, is well-positioned. The site is next to Park, Amity, Fats, and T, T Amity, with access to regional water line, Caltrain, One One, Regulay, John Barkman, B, Bay Farm, and other tenants that are resourced. Regarding the, regarding the fund, we can say, um, they're in, in a very good shape, actually. Um, so based on our, um, uh, financial and development consult, and you are very competitive in Calhoun, you apply for two million. They applied for two million. And providing the sample fund, they, they are, so a sample fund is from Santa Clara County. It's for one point five million. And we are, and that's the funding, we are going to manage that from Santa Clara County. And we are, we are ready to flow. So it will be in the world of parrot in a few weeks. So I know that we are executing this one and the right donation for one point five. The structure is, this is their financial, especially in defense, but we think you are in very, very good shape. And the all-day purchase aside, and it's the, the model is big family, the type is big family type. And there are like two, three and four bedroom units, ranging from seven hundred square foot to fifteen hundred square foot. And Habitat is deeply committed to sustainability. That's another item they want to discuss. So Habitat is also making sure that those homes are healthy, efficient and built for that. So we are working on LEED Silver Certifying, all electronic and design for zero net energy. So it means that each unit gets roof top solar, efficient heating and cooling system. Noise will be using windows and appliances that keep your facilities low and improve indoor air quality. So all of these features, they will work for all the families that are within there now and in the future. So I want to just discuss cost per unit. It seems high, one point three, point eight. But if you consider this is for like eight townhouse, townhouse, home and with all those green features available and cost, like fixed costs that we see for like eight homes, such as Napa, that is two point eight million, entitlement and permitting fees, design and professional services, project management and overheads. And those kind of stuff, start price and infrastructure like doing and those stuff. You can divide those. And so per unit, it's like for eight units, it's not for like fifty units or seven units or one hundred units. So if it go hard anyway, you can change it. So price per unit will be hard anyway. And per NOFA for first time home ownership, max that we can dedicate is one million for major case. So they can come back for more. And they're asking for one million major case. And we are recommending for one million, the recommendation is for one million.
Questions from the public? No, again, thank you. All right, closed public comment. Questions from the community here? Yes, Rich and Jenny.
So I'm just curious, at forty years, what will the price point be on this or fluctuate for their for sale?
For the academy, um?
Like, how do they value them in the future?
Habitat does some kind of trending. Yeah, she made, I mean, off the top of her head, but.
There are resale restrictions that Habitat has the opportunity to. First, the homeowner has some equity when they sell, but then Habitat acquires it and resells to maintain affordability.
I understand that. I'm worried about if something is as high as seven hundred thousand dollars. Even people with moderate jobs have a hard time calling for that, let alone lower income people. So my concern is that we build it and we may not find people that can afford to actually.
Yeah, so the underwriting of this project is designed to have zero down payment, zero interest mortgage and the monthly payment is limited to household, actual, thirty percent of the household's actual income. Habitat is underwriting this for homeowners who are in a very low income and lower income category. And they are underwriting this. So they expect to have a lot of purchasement because of the firms.
So I guess the other concern that I have with this, this is just my not understanding. It's, I've been in my place for forty-eight years. I don't move around. Say, somebody stays forty years, they may have a balloon on that stuff. Is that correct?
No, no, there will not be a balloon payment on that. Because, so it, these are zero interest, zero down, fully, so they're amortized. So you're going to be paying, what's interesting about this is normally when you pay mortgage payment, your first mortgage payment that you make is like all interest and your last mortgage payment you make after forty years or thirty years is all principal. These are principal from the day one because of zero down and zero interest.
I understand that.
So that's why if they go to sell, they would be selling whatever the equity that they probably paid into on their home is probably what they'd be entitled to. There's a, I'm sure there's a formula, but personally, when I look at this, I think a million dollars, leveraging a million dollars to allow eight families to buy townhomes in the, you know, Bellevue area of, in an area that we haven't even wrestled, will be a very popular. Yeah, they will not have problem getting these out the door.
He showed us the, you guys, by years, it's not a problem.
Yeah.
My concern was that somebody was buying a home, very happy with it and they end up with more than they thought they took. But I had explained to me not understand.
Yeah, I think it should be fine and they're not going to be subject to the vicissitudes of the interest rate market. And really it'll just be how much have they paid down? What is the appreciation? And I'm sure there's some formula where what they paid into the mortgage, they will recover plus some percentage of the accrued appreciation. The rest goes back to the housing. And then there, these houses, Rich, will never really be at market like you and I think about market because they're always going to be priced at a point that's going to qualify them for like a fifty, sixty percent AMI family. They're never going to be huge appreciation.
I understand that. We have several locations.
Right, yeah.
One final thing is, I'm speaking loudly to people that spoke in here, is we didn't ask them about their homeowner default rate? Because we want to understand, you know, kind of to your question, we didn't ask about the homeowner default rate. And they said that over their thirty-five year history, they have zero foreclosure rate. That they, each quarter, they aren't by how they have reported from Amerinet demonstrating that. That in the fourth quarter of last year, three percent of homeowners were delinquent, so five out of one hundred fifty in four of those less than thirty days. They did talk about the financial assistance and all the technical support that they provide to homeowners that have departed the foreclosure prevention effort. And they also see to their mission, they try to keep people, you know, catch them before it gets too late and work with them. You know, they wage vacancies, they charged vacancies during COVID. So it seems like they do make that effort to try to keep people out, not get over their heads.
Yes, so, go ahead, Jenny.
My comment is Habitat for Humanity is a great organization. However, consistently, their projects are so expensive. This is like four hundred thousand dollars a unit over most of the, most of the other projects that we're looking at. And it just seems like, you know, it's been all putting in grand and counter talk.
Well, I think there's two things that drive that, which is one, land cost. So you have a same size parcel in a lot of these places, they're building seven, eight stories and these guys are building two. So their cost per unit is much higher than in a really dense. There's probably the zoning restrictions in this neighborhood. It's in a, she said it's in a single family residential neighborhood, so they probably.
And it's mostly one-story houses.
One-story houses, so they're not going to build ten-story apartment building in there. And then the second piece of the, of the cost driver, you've got cost of land. And then unlike an apartment building, it's going to put, say, for example, solar on. Like you're saying, these people are having to do all these sort of higher upgrades. I mainly with state law, like state law requires each unit to have their own solar. So you're just, it's just more expensive to build like this than it is to build super dense, you know, housing. It's more expensive to build a single family home than it is to build a duplex.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they're only asking for a million. And, I mean, let's face it, you don't, the way people accrue wealth in this country is through homeownership. And just building rentals after rental after rental and having people not be able to experience what many of us do, which is the ability to own.
Keep them tread water.
Homeownership. So to me, these units, even though they're small, it's a very, like, if you look at our cost per unit, they're very small, hard point size. But the benefit, even though it's a few families, it's like, I'm just like chip away a little bit at a time. Eight units, ten more units, eight more units. We're trying to think about this in Burlingame. We have sixty-five percent of our people that live there rent. So how do we convert them from renters to homeowners and create an opportunity for them to experience equity appreciation?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate all those. It's getting these four, it's just normal for people to come to that.
Well, a single family home serves one family. So, you know, I don't know what to say. At least these are serving, and on a lot of a single family home size, you're at least serving eight families. So I, I mean, do you, would you prefer not to do this?
No, I just, it's, it's, I realize this is kind of a philosophical argument about how best spend money. So it's kind of beyond the purview with this point of what we're doing here so we can move on.
But I mean, the money is not going to, the hundred and twenty-five thousand does not go to the homeowner. It is with the project. But as people acquire equity, say they decide to move to another place, they have a hundred thousand in equity, they can go buy a condo or something else. It allows them to roll over and then these units can come available for additional people.
The next person can start building equity.
The next person can start. At least instead of paying rent, they're paying into essentially a savings account so they can be.
No, 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 I, I, I get all that. It's just.
It also reduces costs for cities later on. So something that we're encountering right now is inclusionary for sale affordable units because of the increase in price over time, because you need that buyer to earn more equity than they're paying in interest to the bank. Because those are financed traditionally with like a first mortgage from a bank. This, we are taking action, the city is taking action to actually buy units that would sell for too high a price. And then we have to write down the price and sell it to a new income qualified household. Otherwise, the units would just be sold at market because no affordable buyer can pay that new higher price based on the schedule of very moderate price increases over time. The great thing about Habitat is it essentially operates like a land trust. So they're doing that writing down every time there's a new buyer.
So Menlo Park's not taking the hit.
Menlo Park isn't going to take the hit for those units that they, that they might otherwise have to to preserve an affordable for sale unit. I mean, that, for me, that's like, we'd love a Habitat, new Habitat project because it's, they take care of that for you.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, Annie?
Yeah, I just wanted to express support for this project and the work that Habitat in general does for a couple of reasons. The first is really having a separate entity other than the cities and jurisdictions really driving this homeownership model, affordable homeownership model. I know several families that have gotten into, in Bay Meadows, in San Mateo, that have gotten into these affordable units at depressed prices. And, you know, they were able to buy three, four bedroom townhomes for three or four hundred thousand dollars. Granted, you know, at the time when they sell, they're not going to get the two million or whatever they're going for today, but they will get equity, some equity that they'll be able to move, move into their next home. The other thing that it creates is it creates stability for families that need larger units. And I think we have a really big problem with that in the county. Larger units where people can stay for a long time while, so they can see their kids stay and grow up in that community. And this is an area that I'm particularly excited about for Habitat to be supporting. Thank you.
Okay, just being wary of time, if everyone's okay with this, we'll move on to the next one, which is eight fifty-one week East Palo Alto, because we've got one, two, three, four more to get through. I think four, is that right? Yeah, four more plus then kind of general discussion in thirty minutes.
Hello, I'm Ethan. So I'm presenting eight five one street apartments. So the new construction rental located in East Palo Alto. It will be developed by San Antonio property and East Palo Alto. Total development cost is fifty-eight point nine million. The measured K ask is ten million, which is fifty percent of the TCD. Development would provide seventy-nine affordable housing units. That includes sixteen frail elderly units and rural homeless units. The total units are fifty-two studios and twenty-six one bedrooms, so two bedroom property managers. This is located in a low resource area, but it is around, within walking distance of, in walking distance of lots of shops, a lot of services, so it does seem to fit the needs of the community. It has a pretty strong layout. They have outdoor seating, spacious community room. Financing positive, the applicant owns the location. They have seventeen million loan, a seventeen million loan from Menlo Park and sixteen point three million land seller loan. So generally, the project seems ready to go, but we have one main concern, which is that the budget lies on tax credits. We're not convinced that they are competitive with those tax credits. Developments with similar competitiveness ratings have walked out for years in a row. So the applicants believe that this funding will help them be more competitive, but we're not fully convinced of that. It's possible this loan may tie up hundreds of eight dollars while developed for short term. There's just a few more highlights to consider. So they did apply last year and we did reject them. We're concerned about fifty percent AMI and they did change that this year, so it's good that they're responding to feedback. For the affordability, this year is averaged forty-one point eight percent, which is good relative to other applications. Second point, we're a bit concerned about their partnership with local services. They currently do have a letter from San Mateo Culture, indicating that they would send science their way to the, to the units, but that was after we checked in with them about their partnership with local services. So if we awarded them funding, we would want to see further commitment, more clarification about how that partnership would work. And lastly, development is an inclusionary component of a larger market rate project. So developers are putting in twenty-three point three million. That's their minimum obligated based on East Palo Alto's inclusionary ordinance. So there is room for them to shore up with funding. There is currently no city funding, there's no HCD funding. So this would essentially be a partnership, San Mateo County, a market rate developer. So to wrap up, we are recommending less than full ask, so four point four million. And we would like to either explore other funding opportunities.
Okay, members of the public. Diego, are you there? I know you wanted to comment.
Yeah, hello, everyone. Diego Terreros here with Eden Housing. Thank you very much for your time and support. We truly appreciate being recommended by the county for an award. After revising, revising the amount recommended by the county, we see that even if we maximize our state tax credits request, we will still face funding gap. We understand that the county's intention is to prioritize projects that are truly ready to move forward. If the county, county could consider increasing its commitment up to six point five million dollars, we will be in a better position to receive tax credits. In parallel, we have been in close discussions with the market rate developer who is approaching the city for additional funds and they are also exploring other potential funding sources. They don't have authorization to increase their own funding or to the project, but will ask as well as reach out for other philanthropic funding. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Diego. Okay.
Yeah, please. How many inclusionary units is this offsetting? Like presumably this is meeting the inclusionary requirement in a market rate project. So how many inclusionary units were required in that market rate project?
Great question.
Diego?
Okay, seventy-eight.
So this is one more than was required?
Yeah. But we are providing much a lower AMI to what the city requests. If, yeah, much more lower.
Okay. Other questions? This is a different project. It's funding a piece of a market rate project and helping them attain deeper levels of affordability compared to some of these other projects that are standalone.
Inclusionary projects, these would be in the market rate project?
Right, right, right.
But sometimes it makes sense for them to do a standalone building if that can be financed with tax credits.
This is a standalone building.
Correct.
Only.
So if you have a huge, huge market rate project with like five hundred units and you've got an inclusionary requirement, sometimes it's more efficient financially for them to put the affordable in a standalone building. Because then they can lower the income, make it more affordable by leveraging tax credits.
Um, do, do, what I, go ahead, Rich, yeah.
Yeah, I, I know this company, actually, I know Peter Pan. This is really becoming more common. Our bespoke project in San Mateo has a nonprofit housing element right next door to it on city-owned property, and the developers actually doing a lot of the services for the below-market rate housing. I actually like this idea, I think it works for us.
Thank you. So there is a request by this developer to consider from four point four to six point five. What I'd like to do is not talk about it right here, but talk about it at the end in a more comprehensive conversation as we think about, you know, where, where people have thought. Let's move on to the next three projects. We have like fifteen minutes. Midway Village Phase Three Daily City Suite.
Okay, I'm here.
Hi, good to hear you.
So hello, everybody. Again, my name is Kuzi Neku, and I'm here to share a brief overview of the The Village Request for Pre-Development planning to support Phase Three of this transformative project that I reviewed again. As many of you may recall, in twenty-seventeen, Hacem issued an R P to Midway Village site. It was a sixteen-acre property it owns in Daily City. Midten Housing was selected as a development partner, and since then, the bid has remained both ambitious and deeply community-focused. The plan calls for a comprehensive redevelopment that will deliver five hundred and fifty-five affordable home units, an new city park, a childcare center, and a classroom space for after-school programs. All designs are reserved, though, in some individuals and families across four phases. And here's where things stand today. Phase one was wrapped up in December twenty twenty-three and is now fully occupied, delivering a hundred and forty-seven affordable units. Phase two, which added another one hundred and thirteen unit program in March of twenty twenty-five, and is on track to complete in twenty twenty-seven. And phase three, which is the focus of today's request, is already fully entitled and is positioned itself to move forward. It will bring a hundred and forty-eight new units, including forty-four homes for relocated Midway Village residents with a mix of studios, two four-bedroom units, and a dedicated residential garage. Construction for Phase Three is projected to begin in, in October of twenty twenty-seven with completion anticipated by November twenty twenty-nine. So affordability levels are broken down on this idea. The unit mix is especially supportive of large families, offering a blend of multi-story apartments and townhomes. You know, as said before, as the four bedrooms, the site is surrounded by valuable amenities and services. And from the readiness perspective, we believe that this project is in a strong position. The site control is very secure under a master C D A. The MiR review is already complete, and Hacem has committed forty-four thousand three shelters. And the nearly four hundred and thirty thousand loan from Hacem is already in place. Financially, the total development cost is just under a hundred and fifty-three million, with per, per-unit cost slightly over one, a one million. M H A funding will also contribute two hundred thousand per unit for six M H A state listed units. With that being said, a few key funding sources are still pending. An eleven point eight million request from both H F and Hacem, and four percent tax credits and bonds, which they intend to apply for early in twenty twenty-seven. With that being said, overall, the project via Manifala Foundation is fully entitled on Hacem own land and backed by committed local partners. And since we still are in the early stages of this phase, we're scaling back the request, the original request from four million to one point two million that the H R S has recommended. And that, this, appropriate this request to fifty, they had raised that transition to Midway Village Phase Three for vision to the alley.
Thank you. Public comment? Nothing? Okay. Okay, anyone, questions, comments on this one?
Funds not secured, A H F fourteen. Who's that referred to?
Sure, A H F thirteen for, that they are planning to revise. Actually, in the early stages, when the applicant asked for a smaller award and acknowledged that they would need to come back and that they would need to come back. So again, with the goal of being transparent and knowing what the project's total eventual need is, if we're presenting that information. They, they will definitely need to come back, and they will definitely need to.
The authority, but it would enable the project to move forward. Okay. Okay. Let's move over to, um, Ridge. Next one, Ridge, yeah, Ridge, I'm in Masonic in Belmont.
My review of the project was, uh, Dan's book. The request Masonic is a proposed affordable housing development in Belmont by C I C of Affordable Housing. And this is our first time seeing this project in our A H F funding cycle. The request is three million dollars from the A H F thirteen. The project is located in a high resource area in downtown Belmont. It is close to Calvin Station, right across the street, and very close to shopping and. They need the state destination of large family projects with more than fifty percent of two and three-bedroom units. They have a total of sixty-three units, one of which is manager's unit. Their average affordability is fifty percent AMI, which is the highest of the nine projects that met threshold. However, it is located, located right next to the second apartment, which has a much deeper affordability. This project is targeted at workforce housing and needs less concrete money. The project, one of our concerns is that the project only provides nine parking spaces, which is not enough considering almost fifty-eight percent of the units are underwritten at seventy percent AMI. And the likelihood of having at least one car per household is much higher. However, the developer is open to investigating, uh, this further exploring other parking opportunities nearby. They're yet to secure four percent tax credit and allow the tax credit as, uh, with applications expected in early twenty twenty-six. While this is a great project in a high resource area, we recommend a smaller award of one million dollars to help them work through some of the issues they're facing.
Members of the public, anyone? No? Okay. Questions?
What does an impact fee deferral mean? How long are they deferred for? And is that being considered the, like, threshold, one million dollars of leverage?
I, I believe the deferral timeline is, can you move?
Uh, I think it's.
Completion of construction.
That's afforded under state law. That's not a give.
Yes, so they, they have acknowledged that they are yet to permit the, the, for an additional funding. But for now, we have one point one million dollars.
It, it, was that, is that what, what the county is considering their, their million-dollar contribution to meet threshold?
We have not done that.
But, but that's not a give. The state requires cities to do that for housing projects. Just pointing that out. You might want to. But then how does this project meet threshold? If they have no million-dollar commitment of outside funding?
So we acknowledge so would that be deferral, that is fine threshold, which, and I understand your objection to that. That is the basis on which we move them to.
So. I, I, I think you might want to consider a fee waiver as meeting threshold, but a deferral is a benefit afforded under state law. The city has to do it, and it's not actual money.
You're already going back to ask Belmont for something, for another, for, for the other project, a million? Why don't you put this in and say the committee would be much, you know, would, would, would like this to go to a one, you know, one mil, at least one million in deferred, I mean, in waived fees. And, or, you know, up to a hundred and forty-eight, or entirely waived fees. We can ask. Tell them that we feel that would be more in compliance with the, um, sort of spirit of the, the threshold. Is that right? Does that work now?
Yeah. I don't mean to pick on Belmont. I love the Belmont staff. I know them super, super well. I hope they're not listening to this. No. But it just seems to like not quite jive with the intent of the threshold requirement.
The spirit, the spirit. Okay, so we're good on that one? Everyone good with that? Or they can put money in. They can defer the fees and put a million, another million in. Those are their two choices. Okay, next one is Metzger Street in Happum Bay. I think our last one.
Yeah, we've already done the November.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. My name is Rafiel Alda. And I reviewed this project with, um, Janis Porcy. And started, this is our fifty-two unit new construction, affordable housing development in Happum Bay. Proposed to serve large families and farmworkers, varying between fifteen and sixty percent of K M I. And A H F thirteen award will support the project through pre-development, entitlement, construction design, and early financing assets. This is a provision one hundred percent affordable housing communities in downtown Happum Bay, a high resource area where new housing opportunities are limited and development is challenging. The units, as I said before, are targeted to large families, farmworkers, and two groups mostly of access to affordable housing in the county. Sponsor is Mithen Housing, an experienced developer with a strong, strong track record in San Mateo County. The project has begun securing housing unit allocations under Happum Bay Growth Control Ordinance, known as Measure D, which is a required step to move forward, forward with entitlements. In addition, the project is working with the C E to complete, complete entitlement steps and expects to be in an S E verified application for streamlined approval in spring twenty twenty-six and expect entitlement by summer twenty twenty-six. The project also has a purchase and sale agreement in place, and the sponsor intends to complete the purchase in, by January twelfth, twenty twenty-six. Some of the issues of concern for Metzger Street are that the project finance, project financing plan assumes an award of about five million dollars from the state H T D Yoncerna funds, which was reasonable at the time of the A H F thirteen application, but the Yoncerna program was not included in the state budget for this fiscal year. So that, that create mainly to a larger county request and poorly planned. So this project is already expected to return to A H F fourteen for additional funding. But questions, if it could be addressed at that time. Another consideration is that the project's on S B thirty-five approval, report construction and proceeds. But at the same time, the project has already overcome barriers created by the, by the city's ground, ground control ordinance. So staff finds that Metzger, Metzger, uh, Metzger Street responds directly to the county's housing element priorities by creating affordable housing for farmworkers and large families in a high resource but difficult to develop coastal area. We recommend that Metzger Street receive one million dollars of A H F thirteen funds for pre-development with disbursement subject to the completed purchase of the site and continued progress toward S B thirty-five entitlement. Additional accounting support can be conceded in A H F fourteen while the financing plan is stronger and entitlement is achieved.
Great, yeah, thank you. Any members in the public? Nope, we're good, okay. So public comment on that one, but, um, thoughts from the city?
Yeah. Good question. So the funds committed, landfill proceeds, what, what does that mean?
Yeah, so, apparently, there is a single family house that is rated to.
So it's on a site that now is occupied.
Yeah, but the idea is to partition that, uh, the, the lot, the land, and they're gonna sell a portion, right?
Well, so the city owns the land now?
No, it's a part, people that have, have.
Oh, so they're gonna buy it and then sell half of it?
Yeah, sell a part of it, yeah. And they are gonna write off, you know, a part of it.
Uh-huh. And of course, everybody, everybody knows they're in for a brawl.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I, this reminded me about where five 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 Kelly.
Well, five 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 Kelly isn't even, you know, it's still being fun.
Yeah, 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 still being fun, yeah.
It's gonna be a shit show.
Yeah, and again, not our, not our problem, but, I mean, it is, but it isn't.
It just drives up the cost.
Yeah, it drives up the cost. Is everyone comfortable with a, with a million going to this project? Right now, just to continue to let them, to try to work it through the, to continue to work it through the system? I mean, they desperately need more housing in Happum Bay, so.
This is their first financial application. Not only the county in general.
I'm all, good.
Okay. Okay, so let's wrap this one up, and let's go back to the slides really quick. We have five minutes that has the, at the very beginning, that has the recommendations on it. I think it's on, it's A H F seventeen point oh draft funding recommendation. Okay, so, I guess, if I were summarizing what's on the table here, I would say there's a conversation to go back to both Belmont projects. One for, somewhere in one of those two, for him to put in a million dollars cash, which could help reduce.
Or waive the fees entirely.
Or waive the fees entirely. The waive the fees entirely pro, prospect on the second project doesn't add any more money to our bucket. It just changes the status. The other project, unless we took a million back, because they then waived fees and they wouldn't need it. So potentially, something in that combination of Belmont, and then we have the conversation around the East Palo Alto. It's potentially another million.
They wanted, they wanted, they wanted two point one more.
Two point eight five one week? Oh, no, 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 I was coming out from a standpoint, I mean, excuse me, the North Rose Project. What I was coming back at that was, they've been granted a million. There's conversation going on here, you know. I mean, I, I, I'm feeling like that probably should be in the funding mix. And the other offline conversation can be around, you know, between the supervisor's office and our representative. So just say you look at the two Belmont projects, that's potentially another two million coming back if it were to, if we were to get some of that. if we were to get some of that. And the only project that really kind of came back in and really asked for an up was the, was it the E project? And the Palo Alto to go from four... Yeah, to go from four point five to six point five.
Yeah, so they wanted another two.
Go ahead.
I just want to make...
Please.
In the process of doing thresholds, we do discuss what is the true county. And we do try to get clarification on that. We don't really expect that, but as you can see, some projects are over asked, some projects are under asked. And we're trying to figure that out. Their request today, I think we could definitely follow up with them with our financial due diligence component. Because that request didn't emerge during the, during the background.
So I would ask them to... Give you some good press.
This is the project, if there were funding phase or other awards, that we would... In fact, we get more, but the amount, really, we need to get some expert advice on why they're asking for that amount and how does this play out.
Is everyone, I've...
Wasn't discussed during the threshold.
For Jan's recommendation, is everyone okay then with, in general, this is the, we're good with these funding allocations, knowing that we're gonna go back and research a couple of more for ask? We've got a couple of questions from Belmont. And knowing that the priority project, if any money comes back or isn't used, is Sand Hill eaten?
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially, potentially.
Depending on the financial analysis.
Depending on their analysis. Because I don't think it's a recommendation bias or anything, it's just, I'm trying to understand how the process is working through and kind of what your thinking is. Does that seem accurate?
Yeah, I wish that that seemed the opportunity, since we have a third compromise before. So that equals our financial...
Perfect, right. Okay, so you'll have some answers for us in a week when we come back. And that, I think, does that summarize sort of the will of the committee? Okay, anyone else? Does that seem okay? Any members? I know George doesn't like the million going to the project in his neighborhood.
I've spoken my piece.
Okay, if everyone's good? Questions, anyone else? All right. Does staff feel pretty good about the whole thing?
We do want to just announce the next meetings if we can, or after the public hearing, we do have one more slide. We have ten to meet, we want people to check their calendars if you can. So we're gonna start off with the winter NOFA for the federal funds. And then also Jan and I talked about the October meeting, also talking about the AHS priorities, more about strategic discussion. That will be October twenty-second. And then in March, the third and twelfth are technically set for when we would have the study session and public hearing. People can look at those and let us know if anyone has any, you know, we have a lot of flexibility right now. So let us know if for some reason you can't make it. You can prefer more in your afternoon for the twenty-second, et cetera, but those are our working dates right now.
Do you mind if we have them? Or would...
We can follow up with an email. We can follow up with an email with ten to date, because people have them, because I know women do, people do. We'll follow up with an email. Expect that, bro.
Yeah, that's just a reminder, next meeting we do have forum discussion.
Okay, anyone here know they cannot make it next week?
I'll be remote, but I've already communicated with the team about that.
Okay, great. So you can qualify because we'll have an address for you?
Just a reminder, according to the Brown Act and recent interpretations of remote participation, we have to have a quorum present in the room to qualify.
You can still vote with this page, but you want to count with it.
Right.
Yeah, I will. And you're not gonna be here, okay. And what do we need for quorum? How many can we be missing?
On those twelve, so we need seven.
Seven, okay. So we know we have one out, two out, one participating, one out.
But not counting.
And not counting as quorum. Okay, so we'll check, we'll check with the others to make sure. Check this?
Yeah, I have an hour to deal with.
Okay, great. Yay! Well, thank you all so very much. We really appreciate it, really grateful. We'll conclude the meeting. Done. Three o'clock on the nose.
I'm incorporating county, it's always the red-haired stepchild. That's part of what you saw also.
I gotta do it with them. My home for all of us.
Yeah, are you gonna take that from the car?
Yeah, because other areas, other areas. So they have, city council...
Are you gonna, are you gonna do it here?
Sure, yeah.
All right, you wanna just do it together?
Yeah.
Just sit in here for a second.
And as far as the police, that, I mean, that was one of the issues that we wanted to incorporate. We wanted cops.
How are you? Good to see you.
May as well be down, you know. I have some stuff for you, maybe we can do that to the... You're not...